Commission meeting for Thursday, August 15th, 2024. It is 6:31 PM. Present this evening are Commissioners Jake Pearson, Lisa Malkovich, Pete Heristow, Michael Richards, and I am Mayor Patterson, the Chair. Excused is Michael Henry and Ned Hacker. From staff this evening, we have Zachary Smallwood and Mark Richardson. We would like to welcome the public attending our meeting. We are always grateful for you to be here. Some etiquette items to review. We ask that you turn silence your cell phones. And when it comes time to make a public comment on an agenda item, we will give you more instructions about how to do that. If you are viewing this meeting online on the live stream, there's only one way to make a public comment, and that is to email planningcommission@murray.utah.gov. If you post a comment on the Facebook or YouTube feed, it will not be seen. So going through our business items, there are no meeting minutes for us to review. Do any of the Commissioners have a conflict of interest with any of the text amendments this evening?
No.
Neither do I. Agenda item number three is our approval of findings and facts and conclusions for Cottonwood Galleria. Has everyone had a chance to review those findings of facts and conclusions?
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve those?
Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the findings of facts and conclusions for the Cottonwood Galleria.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay. We will move on to our agenda item number four, text amendment for accessory dwelling units. And that will be presented to us by Zachary Smallwood.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. This is a continuation from the accessory dwelling unit code changes that we had proposed on July 18th. There were some questions that the Commission had, and so we made some corrections and are back. So part of this has was a result of, so doing this text amendment was a result of the moderate income housing plan that was adopted by the City Council as required by the Utah State Legislature. One of those were to, the strategies were to create or allow for and reduce regulations for internal or detached accessory dwelling units in residential zones. The legislature wants to see progress on this every year. So this will be a consistent thing until we update the moderate income housing plan again. So we're here to talk about that again. Yeah, so I recycled a lot of these slides, but some of the proposed changes are remove language prohibiting door, prohibiting the door on corner side yard areas. As I mentioned in the last presentation, you really can't tell when there's a side door, if it's going to be like a dwelling or anything of that matter. So in our opinion, it just seems like a silly thing to have. This looks like the front of the house, but this is actually the corner side yard area. The front is actually around the corner there. Couple for detached specifically, increasing the allowable area up to 50% from 40%, but still leaving the max of 1,000 square feet. This allows for smaller homes to build a little bit larger of a detached accessory dwelling unit. Reducing the parking requirements to match the attached standards of one additional space. Since implementing this, we have not, we still to this day do not receive complaints on approved ADUs. And we haven't seen anything come of that reduction down to one additional parking space there. The biggest are reducing the setbacks from 15 to 25 feet to 10 feet on the rear and increasing the setbacks from eight feet on the sides to 10. The only reason for that is for simplicity sake. I went back and forth in rewriting this because I know there was a discussion on whether we should leave it eight or if we should, you know, change, keep it at 10. I almost changed it back to eight and I was like, no, 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 I'll just leave it alone. And left it 10. So that's if we want to have that conversation, happy to have it because I'm happy with eight as well. And then also remove the requirement for the ADU to match the existing dwelling. As was kind of mentioned in our pre-meeting, and I'll kind of discuss it here. State law prohibits cities from regulating materiality, colors, and things from single-family homes currently. So I think it's a, it's a good, good idea to not require that as well. And also in my research, I really didn't find that in any other cities code regarding ADUs. Oh, this was just me showing the difference in setbacks. So a pre-1987 home has a 15-foot rear yard setback. And a post-1987 home has a 25-foot rear yard setback. So you can really see the distances here that allow for, oh my gosh, I'm going the wrong way. Okay, we'll just click it here. So yeah, you can see the significant difference and size difference that somebody would be allowed on both of those. So as I mentioned, this was tabled from the July 20, or July 18th Planning Commission meeting. We realized that I didn't have a setback for corner yard ADUs. So I implemented that in, put that at 20 feet currently just to maintain that, that current setback there. Re-added the short-term rental definition. And then again, like I said, just in staff's opinion, we don't feel putting in the materials and colors is really warranted. So same as last time, findings are the same. So Objective 9 of the land use and urban design element of the general plan mentions making ADUs easier. Also aligns with Objective 11 of the land use and urban design element for stimulating reinvestment in deteriorating areas of the city. Also find that Objective 3 of the neighborhoods and housing element encouraging housing options for a variety of age, family size, and financial levels. And then also reviewing and updating those will further those priorities in the moderate income housing plan. So we are recommending the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval for the changes. Any questions I can answer right this moment?
I have one question. And you went over this last time. So we're going to redo it because I don't remember exactly what the answer is, but.
I think I know where this is.
Under A. Is that, was that the one you thought I was going to ask about?
That's the one I thought we were going to go over.
I just want to make sure I understand the purpose of this because I don't like the wording of it. But what we're saying is that the property owner must either occupy, I'm not, I'm using my own words, must either occupy the main dwelling or the ADU.
Correct.
And they cannot rent the unit they're in.
Correct. They cannot receive any rent for the unit that they are occupying.
And we're trying to do that because we want to make sure that someone doesn't build an ADU and then make both sections rentable. Is that the purpose?
Correct, yeah. Yeah, I agree. It's not the greatest wording, but I can't, I can't. I tried to think about how to reword it and it just kept hurting my head even more.
Okay, I'm good, thanks.
I have two questions.
Sure.
One is light-hearted and the other one's a little more serious. The light-hearted one is every time we talk about ADUs in the regulation 17.78E, it says installing separate utility meters for the ADU is prohibited. I don't understand why that would be a bad thing or a good thing to have them separated. And why would it affect anybody? And why do we care? Because I don't see why we'd care. I'm okay with having it there. But why would we care if the meters are separated?
So this I do remember from the original code. And that was that having a separate utility meter is what legalizes it. Well, not necessarily legalizes it, but really makes it a duplex at that point instead of an accessory to the main dwelling. That's why we don't allow for the additional meter.
How about mail then? Do we not allow box A and B?
We do allow that, yes.
Oh.
Yep.
That has the same effect.
Yeah, it, it, to a point, yeah.
But if I remember right, the power were adamant. Like that was like a big, like you cannot separate.
Power won't allow it. Even if we took it out of our code, they will say no.
That was like a big deal for them. They couldn't be metered separately.
Yeah.
I also guess I found it intriguing because in-house, not detached dwellings, for example, the accessory dwelling in the basement, they have to be able to control their heat separate from the heat upstairs. So if they have to be able to control it separate, sometimes I would think that would lead to separate meters, but.
Well, they can be on the same meter, but two systems.
Yeah, two controls.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's typically what they do. They either have baseboard heating or a lot of times what they do is, now I can't remember what it's called. It's like a two, a dual-zone. Yeah, like a split system.
Then my other question, there's a little more of that, I think. We'll see. Accessory dwelling side access door. I was hadn't thought of this until just now when you showed those pictures. Do we define that door? Does it have to be a woman door? Or can it be an overhead door? I joke with woman door because we usually in these meetings say a man door.
Yeah, no, no.
Does it have to be a man door?
I didn't even catch that. I was like, oh, woman door.
I was like, I've never heard of a woman door before. That's cool.
Does it have to be a human door? Can it be a roll-up? Door, can it, do we need to define?
I don't know if you'll need to define it because it really.
Does it matter? I don't know. I mean, I think we're trying to keep the look of a house. So a side door that could be to anything, garage. But a roll-up door could make it look like.
I don't think we would permit a roll-up door as an entrance to a, to a.
That wasn't a garage.
Yeah, that might be something that's regulated in the building code. Because yeah, I don't think they would consider that as an entrance to, to, to something.
A lot of people have garage, garages on the sides of their house that they drive their car in and uses their main entrance. I mean, for them, right? I don't see why. That would be terrible.
I agree. I'm just thinking through accessory dwelling.
But I guess it doesn't, I mean, does it really like, if the accessory dwelling units entrance, there would still be a door into, it would just be a garage door right into a house. I don't know if we need to.
Regulate that?
I don't know. Doesn't seem like it matters how they get into their accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, I don't think it would. Because we have permitted in the past a, an entrance. So it's, they enter, so they go in the garage and they enter through the garage to do it. But they still have their own kind of like door to get into their living space. So I don't think it really.
I mean, the only reason, I had not thought about that until I looked at the picture in the presentation. So I have not thought this through. But in the presentation, we were talking about making the houses still look like a single-family home instead of a duplex or apartment.
Right.
And that's why I thought, oh, does it matter? I don't know.
Yeah.
Maybe not.
I mean, my opinion is they could build a garage back there and with could be a roll-up door. So for me, I don't think I have a concern that they're gonna, I don't think it's going to happen. But if it did, then it would maybe just look like a garage.
Right. With these changes, Zach, do you anticipate, I mean, you were kind of mentioning our interior, interior accessory dwelling units have gone up since they've been permitted uses and we've had a lot more. Do you think these changes will increase the amount of detached?
Yes.
Accessory dwelling units? They will make it more possible for them to do it?
I definitely do. Since we implemented these initial changes in 2021, I believe, I would get probably, probably half a dozen calls a month of people wanting to do a detached ADU. And for whatever reason, usually it's the area, you know, which we reduced last year, which is actually, we've been able to have a lot more conversation. I can at least get past that question. Usually it starts with, oh, well, how big's your property? Oh, okay, no, you can't do it. So now I can usually get past that. And then next comes, you know, setbacks. But I do think it will result in a lot more.
And I could be wrong about this, but I think some cities have moved to, just, it's just a lot. Well, I know statewide, it's just allowed, but are much more flexible about, do you, well, I guess my question is, do you ever see as our housing crisis gets worse that there, someone could do an interior ADU and then a detached ADU? Still, as a property owner living in something, right? As we need more space.
Yeah.
Right now, that's not allowed. Do you think that that would ever?
I think it's an interesting conversation to have, and I think it could be a possibility in the future. I know states like Washington and California allow you to have up to four ADUs per single-family home by right. You don't need to do anything. And so, and I know my, my city, Midvale, does allow for you to have an attached and detached currently.
And I think Salt Lake, right? A lot of them that have, that need more space have moved.
I have a friend whose husband passed away and she rents out her basement and involves it independently. And the garage in Salt Lake.
Yeah.
And it'll be very few properties that could qualify for that based on the parameters. But I just, I just wonder if, like, are we just kicking the can down the road of something that we will eventually need?
I think, so how I've been approaching this is doing it kind of incrementally. Kind of like I said at the, at the beginning of the presentation, I anticipate us coming forward with new changes every year. After I see kind of how the year goes, I can come back and say, you know, because there's a lot that I think we could do that other cities are doing. We don't allow a second story above a detached garage currently. So all these detached ones are only going to be on the ground floor, ground level. You can't have a second floor above.
You can't like even have running water or something, right?
You can have running water, yeah. But, but yeah, you can't have a second floor to your detached garage. That's probably, in all honesty, probably the next one. And because there's actually a bunch that already exist in the city. And yeah, so I think just.
So it'll come, I'm just jumping too far.
No, you're not jumping too far.
I just think that that would be, like I said, it, it would only affect a certain amount of properties in the city that would even be able to do that. And I don't know, I, I think it'd be.
Doesn't this house bill when we presented it initially? And every time I read it, I cringe a little bit because it says it provides that the state provide a yearly report on the steps the city is taking. So that we need to take baby steps because if we do everything this year, we'll have to think of something to do next year.
Exactly.
All right, well, I'm just putting in my little, my little kick for maybe we could get there sooner rather than late.
Okay.
How, this, you know, you have to do a yearly report stating the steps you've made toward making a formal housing more attainable. How long is that? Is that for the next 50 years, the next five years? What's the?
Not a deadline on it, yeah.
It's until.
Our housing crisis itself.
The end of time. It's in state code right now that we have to report on it every single year. And there is no.
Well, when that bill happened, it was presented to us as if we were a little bit ahead of the game compared to some other cities. So because we kept saying, do we get credit for these three things?
You do, yeah. Yeah, and we never, we don't. So and we are continuing to do things. Just two nights ago at the RDA, for example, we have an employee down payment assistance program that's just exclusive for, the money is set aside for employees. This is either good or bad, but the employees make too much. We've had two applicants and both of them were rejected. So like we're, I talked to the RDA and we're actually going to expand that to the school districts. So teachers can apply from Granite and Murray. So who open, who run schools. They have to buy in Murray, but it allows them to do that. So we're continually trying to kind of innovate those, those moderate income housing elements.
But I think you make a good point that we are holding back maybe some of our progress because we have to do incremental things every year.
I agree.
And so we're like, well, we'll only do this stuff so we can report on that rather than maybe making some more sweeping, you know, result changes.
I don't disagree.
Yeah. Well, any other questions for staff? Okay. We will open this agenda item up for public comment. If you would like to make a public comment on this, we ask you come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. And we ask you keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this agenda item?
Hello. My name is Robert. I'm actually, I'm a homeowner in Salt Lake City, actually. And I biked here, actually. It was a wild ride. I'm a city planner student, master student at the University of Utah. And yeah, I have following the development for ADUs as part of a project I'm doing. And I thought I would just speak in encouragement for the kind of revisions made or proposed for today. In particular, the style item. I think there's a lot of really exciting development with prefabricated units that your residents might want to participate in and say they contact the company, get an invoice or even make a payment. And it turns out that, that the, you know, the prefabricated unit goes against the municipal code and the municipal code doesn't quite align with the state. I thought it seems to be wise to kind of make, make way for that, kind of make an allowance for that. And yeah, ADUs can be a very effective way of providing more housing units. For the state of California, I think one of five of every housing unit developed within the last year has been an ADU. And it's actually, the impact is really, really low impact. My home is in the 9th and 9th neighborhood in Salt Lake City. It's, I think, second best, rated second-best neighborhood in the state. And if you walk around kind of the back streets and you're really looking for it, you can see that there are ADUs, but it's really hard to distinguish them from the garages. And ultimately, it is still the calm and charming neighborhood that we all know it to be. So yeah, I support this amendment, especially in terms of the moderate housing plan mandated by the state. I assume you guys have six strategies to report on because you guys probably have a TOD in the city. So thank you so much for your time and yeah, thank you.
Thank you for being here. Were there any online or email submissions? All right, then I will close the public comment portion. I think that's a really great point that I have seen things advertised to me. I don't know if it's just my age or stage of life, but for like aging parents, they have a lot of prefabbed, detached things that you could add to your house so they could safely be there and be close and.
Can I actually share a story of one? So you may have seen off Vine, about 450 East Vine, there's a new house being built. It's like a one-story house, you can see. She actually got a variance to the rear yard setback for a detached ADU because there's a power line easement that goes through the middle of her property. So she actually got a variance to be 14 feet back from that. And that's specifically because she's in, she's an older lady building a new home and it's for her, her live-in nurse to live there while she, so they still have separate living facilities, but she's near enough by that she can actually do that. I just finished writing up her, her thing. So yeah, it's pretty exciting.
Yeah, that's a neat story.
Yeah.
I mean, if we talk about lifecycle housing, that's got to be part of it, right?
Yep.
And I could see the same thing applying to kids that aren't quite old enough to leave the coop, but are trying. So you're 21-year-old that's in this market, right? 21.
30-year-old now.
32-year-old in this market, whatever it is. I had another thought too for our one member, one resident that participated tonight, Robert. As a student listening to our discussion, you might be the person that might go talk to legislators, legislators about house bill for 62 and see if amendments can be made so that knowing now that cities are slow-rolling ideas so that we have something every single year, maybe talk to them and see if you could get credit. If you make three, four changes in a year, you have credits for the next three years or something of that nature so that changes happen faster.
Yeah. That is interesting.
That would be a great student project.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any further discussion or is there a motion on this item?
I'll make a motion. The Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the proposed amendments to Chapter 17.78, accessory dwelling units as reviewed in the staff report.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Richards. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion to forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council for the proposed amendments to Chapter 17.78, accessory dwelling units as reviewed in the staff report by Commissioner Richards and a second by Commissioner Malkovich. Is there any discussion on that motion?
No.
Okay, we can take a roll call vote.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich?
Yes.
Commissioner Heristow?
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
And Chair Patterson?
Yes. All right. Agenda item number five, our sign code text amendment.
Perfect. Yeah, me again. It's all me tonight. Yeah, this is a staff-led text amendment for adding a definition in regulation regarding screen signs. That's Chapter 17 dot 48 dot 040 and 17 dot 48 dot 200. So proposed changes are add screen sign definition. This was something that I found off of Orem's website.
I was going to say, how did you take that picture?
I did not take that picture. That is Google Street View. So yeah, just kind of showing what a screen sign is. It is actually, you know, architecturally and aesthetically quality of building, you know, attached to the building. Other sign regulations, property must be a minimum of three acres, shall be located within 100 feet of the I-15 freeway, shall be oriented towards I-15, must be incorporated as an architectural element of the building. Only one permitted per property, may not exceed five square feet per linear foot of building frontage, and must be located a minimum of 50 feet above finished grade. That way, we can ensure that they're freeway-oriented. Also, we are not recommending this be anywhere near I-215. That's much more residential in nature. You have a lot more residents over there. Not a lot, not as many businesses or, you know, flashy signs along the 215 corridor. So I didn't feel comfortable proposing it there. So some examples of where we've seen this in other places, at least in Utah. So over here on your left is Hale Center Theater, about 90th South, well, 100th South, actually. They, they do have something. Um, they they do have something. I I I don't think this one is as great because it's attached to a parking structure and I don't like it as much. Um, doesn't fit as well into the building. Uh, but the one here on the right is part of University Place in Orem. And this whole thing, and then it wraps around the corner here. Um, you also have to take into consideration, this is one, two, three, maybe four stories tall. Um, and uh, so it's a much larger sign. Um, so just some of the examples we we're finding. Um, there's not much to really talk about on this one, uh, except for what we're requesting. So it is within uh objective five of the economic development element of the general plan. I don't usually cite that one very often. Um, to increase uh the sustainability of the city's tax base through increased uh office property values and creating additional employment centers. Um, is in harmony with initiative two of the general plan, which is create office and employment centers by allowing uh an innovative elements that attract businesses to office office development. And then also uh staff finds that continuing to review and update development standards furthers the city's mission of guiding growth to promote prosperity and sustain a high quality of life for those who live, workshop, and recreate Murray. So with that, we are recommending the Planning Commission forward uh recommendation of approval. Any questions?
Okay, there are no questions for staff, then I will open this agenda item for public comment. Um, have we gotten any emails? All right, seeing no public comment, I will close the public comment portion for this agenda item and bring it back to the commission for discussion or a motion.
Chair, I'll make a motion that the Planning Commission forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the proposed amendments to section seventeen dot forty-eight dot zero four zero and seventeen dot forty-eight dot two hundred within the sign code as reviewed in the staff report.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. I have a motion to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the proposed amendments to section seventeen point four eight point zero four zero and seventeen point four eight point two zero zero with the sign, within the sign code as reviewed by the staff report. Um, a motion made by Commissioner Pearson and a second by Commissioner Horisto. Is there any discussion on that motion? Someone can take a vote.
Great. Um, Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
Commissioner Horisto.
Yes.
Commissioner Malkovich.
Yes.
Excuse me. Uh, Commissioner Richards.
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. All right. Motion is approved. And next item is our text amendment for our fence regulation.
Yeah, um, so this is a another request from staff. Um, clarifying residential fencing and allowing additional height in residential zones. So um currently, when you have a, or if you live on a corner lot and the neighbor behind you um i- installs a driveway or something um within twelve feet of your property, it actually limits the height of the fence that you're able to build. So you can kind of see that illustrated here. Um, so if this driveway is within twelve feet, you're no longer able to put in fencing along this area. Um, staff doesn't feel that's very fair to the property owner that owns that home. Uh, so last year, uh, the city attorney's office um and engineering and planning got together and tried to figure out how we could make that a little bit easier for people to utilize some of their property and provide some additional privacy. Um, and what we came up with is uh reducing that to ten feet. So if it's less than ten feet from the home and then uh also uh doing something similar than that what's required above where you have a site triangle, um, so you have this site triangle of ten feet. Uh, so you take the right-of-way line, you measure ten feet either into the property or along the right-of-way line and connect those that creates a a triangle here. Um, and it's, that's limited to three feet if it's a solid fence, four feet if it is um seventy-five percent see-through. Uh, otherwise, you can increase that to a six-foot fence area. So uh what I wanted to do to kind of help illustrate some of that is, so here's an example. Here is a corner lot um with no driveway nearby it. They're able to fence the entire area. So you can see, this is about the property line here. They're able to fence and use the entire corner side yard area. This is also within code. You can see they do have a driveway fairly close to their property. Um, and they are not able to fence in any of this area here. Um, they can only fence up up to here. So going back, I don't remember why I was doing that, coming back to this slide. So I'm just going to skip past it again. Uh, um, but here's some examples that almost get you there. Um, this doesn't quite fit, but this is kind of what we're looking at is, you know, it's going to slide over it kind of go kitty corner here and able to build up. This still provides that site distance. Um, and I'll, I will mention that I spent a lot of time on Google Earth going through Street View and looking at people's fences. Um, and so this actually gives an example. Um, so this wouldn't currently be allowed. This is, wouldn't be allowed currently um for for that reason, right? Um, that comes right up in here. Uh, this is what I was kind of explaining, uh, Jake in the pre-meeting. This would be the right-of-way line. Um, so everything in here is right-of-way. Um, so they have to put the fence on their property line. So um, yeah, this kind of shows you the different types of fencing here.
Um, that wouldn't meet current code or the code we're suggesting because that one corner, right?
Correct.
They just have to.
Yeah, they just have to kind of poke it in a little bit. So uh, proposed changes, allowing additional height between residential and non-residential. This is uh the second kind of change here. Uh, as you remember, a couple of months ago, we brought forward a request by a resident that wanted to build an eight-foot fence um next to a property that was zoned for office uses. Uh, and and we didn't have a mechanism for that. So instead of making them come before the Planning Commission every single time and trying to find a mechanism for that, we just um proposed that if you're between, if you're between residential and non-residential, you can uh put up an eight-foot fence. So findings here, uh, the proposed text amendment promotes individual property rights and does not conflict with the general plan. Uh, the proposed text amendment has been thoroughly reviewed to ensure the health, safety, and general welfare of the community are maintained. And staff finds that continuing to support single-family neighborhoods by allowing additional privacy provides owners with greater use of their property. And so we are recommending that you forward, I feel like I'm saying that funny tonight. Do I normally say that? Forwarding a recommendation of approval to the city council for the proposed amendment.
I think that's right.
Okay. I feel like I'm saying it funny. It like, I feel like I'm just saying recommend like a hundred thousand times, but that's fine.
Has been a lot of the same in a row, yeah.
Yeah.
Are there any questions for staff about?
Uh, I have a few questions.
Sure.
I just want to summarize what I think I know and you tell me if I know this correct. Um, so we're proposing that if it's ten feet or more away, they can do whatever they want. I mean, they can do what currently they can do now. The driveway, yes.
They they can do that.
If the driveway is right up against the property or within ten feet, then they can do the little triangle.
Yeah.
Yes, okay. And then on the corner, if they want to put fence there, they can as long as it's seventy-five percent, I think is what it was, see-through or something like that.
So do you mean like this little section?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Yeah, this little section?
Yes.
Yeah, so it would be, yeah, three feet if if solid, um, four feet if it's like chain link.
So, okay, so if they put a chain link fence or something that has slats or something you can see through, they could have a four-foot fence there.
And just, they only have to do it for this little corner section.
I'm just wondering if, I mean, I'm just trying to think through all the scenarios here, but if they have a six-foot fence and they put a see-through section in it, wouldn't it, why couldn't we just do a six-foot fence the whole corner?
Site visibility for for this property owner.
But it's seventy-five percent see-through, right?
Yes.
Like it was a chain link fence, you'd see through it.
Right.
I kind of see what you're saying because in a car, what's the three foot versus four foot? I don't know.
Yeah, that's why, I mean, I'm just trying to think through that.
Yeah.
Three foot, like three foot, you probably see over, four foot, you probably don't. And so if you don't see over a four-foot fence, you don't see over a six-foot fence and the visibility, I think, would be the same. I think a four-foot high fence.
I see what you're saying.
When you're sitting in your car, I want to be looking through the slats of the fence.
Yeah, and and I think most of that was, the three and four-foot thing was mostly, it's a, it's a continuation of what's already in our code is the three and four-foot. So I think we we've just maintained that.
Is that for the person walking too, not just the person potentially vacuuming?
That's a good point. So you're saying a four-foot fence, you could see over.
If you're walking.
You'd have to be depending on the.
That's a good point. I like that.
There you go.
That is a good.
Good job. You're a planner.
That's dream safe.
Higher, yeah.
I had a corner house just like that.
Oh, okay.
You have experience.
Watch out.
Okay, I I got it. Thanks.
Yeah.
Any other questions for staff? Okay, I will open this agenda item up for public comment. I don't think we've gotten any emails.
I don't think so. I'll double check though. No.
All right, then I will close the public comment portion, seeing none, and call for more discussion or a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we recommend approval of of, oh gosh, of item number six. The forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for their proposed amendment to section seventeen point six four point oh two oh and seventeen point six four point oh nine oh within the fencing regulation, fence regulation code as reviewed in the staff meeting.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Malkovich to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the proposed amendment to section seventeen point six four point zero two zero and seventeen point six four point zero nine zero within the fence regulation code as reviewed in the staff report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Richards. Is there any discussion on that motion? All right, we can take a roll call vote.
Perfect. Um, Commissioner Malkovich.
Yes.
Commissioner Richards.
Yes.
Commissioner Horisto.
Yes.
Commissioner Pearson.
Yes.
And Chair Patterson.
Yes. All right. Motion is approved. Um, is there any further business?
Uh, the only thing I really have is it's going to be a big meeting on the fifth. So let me know if you're not going to be able to make it. Um, it it it's pretty big.
Maybe a little super.
Like, how many are you?
Uh, probably six.
Well, I I guess the question big is in the number or in the audience size?
Yeah, it's going to be, uh, so I will, I'll just give you, I'll just give you names. So is it okay to say, do you think? Okay, well, I mean, it's going to include your item. Yeah, Fuji um is coming back for some amendments. Um, we're going to have an MCCD project. So if you remember the Wyatt um that was done a while back, um, this is the NOAA um, which is on Vine Street. So you'll see it.
But he hasn't built the Wyatt.
They haven't built the Wyatt and it won't be built. Um, at least right now it won't be built. Their 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 approval.
But that's going to lead to Paulson's in the family.
Yeah.
You cannot build the Wyatt then come along and build the Noah.
Um, so the NOAA.
He's after his wife.
Um, and then also um some, a a a rezone that you guys have heard before is coming back. So and 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 I think all three of those will stir up some some comments.
All right. Um.
Other than that, great.
Great. Is there a motion to approve? I mean.
I'll approve.
I have a question though.
A motion to adjourn?
If we know it's going to be a complicated topic and a lot of topics, is that the time? Because we have talked on and off a little bit about that. Is that the time that our pre-meeting should be fifteen minutes longer?
Hmm, do you think we need an additional?
Because we said we could vary according to the agenda.
If you guys will be able to do five forty-five, I think we, I think it would be a good one to do. Because I mean, on top of that, then there are also three conditional use permits. Um, so.
I think the additional time would maybe be.
Yeah, if you guys can make it, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
So five forty-five for the pre-meeting on September four.
Someone might need to inform the commissioners that aren't here.
I will.
You'll send an email out?
Yeah, yeah. And and when I send the packet, I'll I'll include that in the list.
Awesome.
All right, let's try this again. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn at four seven fourteen.
Uh, is there a second? All in favor?
Hi.
I never knew you have to vote on that.
I don't think you do.